Okay, we'll come back to order. The last committee of the afternoon was the committee of the whole. We have two items before us. The first of those is on downtown foot patrol by our police department. I see both our chief and deputy chief are here today. This will be an overview of ongoing efforts by the police department to provide enhanced patrol and outreach throughout the city center. Chief, would you like to start with this?
Thank you, Michael, but no, I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Dahl, who's been preparing for this presentation for the last couple of weeks.
Deputy Chief Dahl.
Thank you, and I'd like to welcome Chief Cook back to work. We're very glad to see him back from a brief absence. I'm going to cut my presentation in short because I know running out of time, but this is a prelude to the next presentation by Downtown Bellingham Partnership. And just to briefly talk about how we're supporting the city center through outreach enforcement with the tools and resources that we currently have. And I want to give you an idea of how we patrol the city center, how we patrol the downtown. Right now, we have one area car that's assigned to that specific location 24 hours a day. Monday through Friday, we also have a foot beat that goes from about 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., that officer works at the WTA. We have a contract with that organization, and that's one of our transit officers. You'll also note that we have a little substation there at the WTA Transit Downtown where our officers can go and write reports and contact people. However, it's not staffed 24 hours a day, but it is marked as a Bellingham Police Substation. In 2015, we received two additional positions on our department with the desire by the mayor that those positions focus on patrolling the city center. So what we did is we converted our bicycle unit to patrol that particular area throughout the morning and early evening hours. We have two people on bicycles that are there Monday through, well, seven days a week, basically, patrolling on bicycles. And I know that I spent two years of my career riding a bicycle on patrol, and I could tell you, it's one of the best ways to do law enforcement, especially in the downtown area. This last year, we did a little experiment, and we partnered with Downtown Bellingham Partnership with the concept of having an addition to the bicycle patrols, but how about a foot beat? Couple of officers walk in the beat, especially in the early morning hours. And the whole idea was not to enforce, but to provide outreach. This is where we might come into contact with folks who might be sleeping in doorways or might need some outreach assistance. The idea, again, wasn't to write tickets, but to help people out, meet with businesses, and see what we can do in the early morning hours in the city center. And that met with such great success that even though it was a very small pilot program, Downtown Bellingham Partnership came to us and said, "Is there any way that we can continue doing that type of thing?" And we said, "Absolutely, we can do that," because they had done a survey of the businesses and some of the residents downtown as well, and it was such a success. So what we ended up doing was we took our bicycle patrol, and we started them earlier in the morning. So now they start at 8:20, and they're doing a foot patrol for a couple of hours, and they're getting back on their bikes and doing the bike patrol for the rest of the time. And that's seven days a week. And I think that this, for us, is an example of how we partner with our community. We get feedback from our community on things that we do, and then we put plans into action as a result of that feedback and allocate our patrol people accordingly. I will tell you that this year, we're going to do some more different types of enforcement to include some additional enforcement on some of our holidays that tend to be little heavy alcohol-type of events, and also put some more resources downtown on Friday nights when we have the art walk, which is something that we've done in the past, but we're going to be doing more of that. So when Downtown Bellingham Partnership comes to thank us for what we've done, this is kind of what we're talking about in terms of how we put our resources in the city center. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Council members, Pinky.
I just want to say that I've gotten a lot of feedback around the downtown businesses and the foot beat in the morning, and how businesses are feeling way more comfortable, and they don't have to have discussions with people who are unsheltered, that are sleeping in their doorways in the mornings, and just to concentrate on their business, that this has been a huge success in regards to the feeling from the downtown businesses. So I just wanted to thank you for offering that service, and I really think it's working. So thank you.
Thank you. Roxanne.
Well, I want to say I appreciate it, too. I know that there's still an ongoing concern amongst, you know, like the greater Watcom County community and people in Bellingham about whether downtown is safe. And we're going to hear even more of that due to recent activity, but the more we can get ahead of some of this stuff and be proactive about the issues that we see on our streets, the safer people will feel, the more business we'll get. It's just an ongoing cycle, so thank you.
Terri.
Yeah, I just wanted to basically echo what Pinky said, that I've heard nothing but good feedback on the foot patrol down there, and heard a lot of people talk to me about, oh, they appreciate having the officers down there and that morning patrol, and yeah, seems to be working real well.
Thank you.
April.
When you talked about your goals for this year, you were talking about enforcement of, was it holidays that are related to alcohol? What are you talking about specifically?
As an example, one that's coming up would be St. Patrick's Day, and having some extra emphasis out there with officers for sort of the conduct-type violations, maybe alcohol violations, DUI enforcement in the city center area.
Okay, thank you very much. It's a great program. I think it's also a very good segue into our next item. And that item, oops, I turned past it. That item is a presentation by the Downtown Bellingham Partnership on its 2016 accomplishments and the 2017 work program. We just heard about a foot patrol program that was in partnership with that partnership. Before us is the executive director of the Downtown Partnership, Alice Clark, and she will provide a report on the accomplishments and lessons learned, and on the organization's scope of work and goals for 2017. Ms. Clark.
Hello, thank you. See if this may be tall enough. Put it like that. I gotta change my glasses, too. Oh, boy. Does anybody else do that? You have a couple pairs of glasses. Anyway, thank you for having me here today. I also want to thank you for your support of our program and the Downtown Bellingham Partnership. Our mission is to champion the health and vitality of downtown through the promotion of commerce, culture, and celebration. And we do this in a variety of ways, but I think why we do it is actually more important almost than what we do. And I think we've been talking about that leading up to this, which is, even though there's a lot of distractions to people going downtown, like online buying and the malls and other things, it's still, downtown's remain our cultural center and our community living room, and I think that's always going to be the case. People just want to be together, and they want to gather in community. So, and I also believe that the health of the communities downtown is a reflection of the health of the community as a whole, and we just talked a little bit about that as well. It's where their active shopping is happening, where culture activities happen, and other amenities. This makes for a healthier community, and a healthier community is a stronger, a stronger community, stronger economically, and it has more involved community members, an increase in the tax base, which will further support education, parks, mental and physical health, housing, and more. So the downtown is really the center of the whole community, and it's really incredibly important, so I'm happy to be doing this work. Our contracts with the city are our operations contract, which is $87,600, which covers most of what we do. We also have a landscaping contract, which is planting, weeding, all the flower beds, the hanging baskets, overseeing litter, graffiti removal, that kind of thing. And we also have a parking contract, which conducts outreach and marketing related to parking downtown. So, a little bit of an overview of the year. I started in January last year. It was a bit of a transition period, and I came in as an interim director. I thought you were saying something to me. And my prior experience was with the Pickford Film Center. I started that with a group of ragtag board members in 1998 and saw it through the development of the Pickford Film Center on Bay Street. And I took a little bit of a break, and then I was offered this position last year, and I thought, well, I'll just do this for a couple of months and get them on track. But it was, I think, in the middle of the summer, I realized that, A, I really enjoyed doing it, and, B, I really loved the challenge, and I realized that it was going to take longer. I saw some things that we needed to accomplish, and it was going to take more time and consistency and leadership for those things to happen. So I began by just creating some systems for the organization, really took steps to strengthen the support and support the board and staff, created policies and procedures, a lot of stuff that doesn't sound very sexy, but you really need to get those things in place before you can go to the next level with things. One of our biggest accomplishments was that we were able to raise nearly $100,000 with the Main Street Tax Incentive Program this year, which was done by really careful planning and just building relationships with our donors. The next thing is we took more of a advocacy and leadership role than in the past. We hold regular safety and security meetings monthly that address some of the issues that we've been talking about today with the beat patrols and other issues. We also created a successful campaign called the Be Kind Campaign in November, when there's Lindsay holding up our poster that you might see downtown, just with the message of inclusion and intolerance for our community. We got a lot of requests for such a message, and so we just made it happen. We also saw increases in attendance at our events. Downtown Sounds experienced record growth this year and was at full capacity every week. Next year, we're going to use both streets in full. Throwback Thursdays is an urban kickball program that we do with the city parks and recreation, and it continued its success with the spring league in May and June, and a summer league in August, bringing over 250 people to the Maritime Heritage Park. So that was a success as well. We took ownership of the Commercial Street Night Market in 2016, and we had four quarterly, we had quarterly night markets in March, June, September, with a special one in December, and our average attendance was about $2,000, I mean, 2,000 people. We had our second annual wine walk, experienced growth in attendance, up from 475 in 2015 to 516 in 2016, and we went from 11 venues to 15. So that was a great spring event that we did. We also continue our art walk, and our venues have gone up from 28 to 32 on average, so a lot of people going out on the town. We worked with Western and the Alumni Association at Western, the Daylight Properties, and created an event that is coming up, Paint Bellingham Blue. Some of you might have heard about it, where we, it started in our Economic Development Committee, and we decided that we really needed to work on connecting the community and the university. So together, we curated this event during one day, and so this is over 1,000 students came downtown, new students. They were welcomed at the Herald Building with the alumni and a marching band, and then we had vendors and music, and it ended with a light show. It was really exciting on top of the Herald Building. So it was just a great way to just really tighten that relationship with Western. I was really surprised such an event had not happened before, and I'm really happy that we made it happen. So we engaged the community in a lot of different ways as well. Our social media reach grew from, is now 16,500, so we increased about 4,000 followers over the year. All of our events, like I said, grew in attendance, and we also added more volunteers to help make them happen. We had four downtown neighborhood association meetings throughout the year, and that ended with a really fun celebratory meeting at Ishka in December, where we were able to do some acknowledgements of businesses and people that have really helped make downtown happen that last year. So Renee at Social Fabric, Goat Mountain Pizza, and we also were able to say goodbye to Gary's Clothing Store. So we also continue to work with the city to promote parking downtown by educating the public about the results of a survey that was done in 2015, just engaging the community members, like with this slide, on, you know, what they think about parking, how can we improve parking. There was new renovations at the Parkade Plaza, so we, I mean, Parking Garage, so we just let people know what was happening and what those improvements were. We conducted a Parking Day event, and we also started getting into the promotion of the Pay by Phone app that is rolling out this year. So the other thing is we continue to do our landscaping. There's Pete, you guys might know him. So we have two dedicated staff people that are doing the weeding, the mulching, the watering during the dry season. They also are just another eye, a couple eyes on the street, just checking in to see what's going on with businesses and reporting back to city staff and us. And they are the lead, they kind of oversee the people that do the actual picking up of litter cascade connections. So it was a good year, it was a solid year. I feel good about it, and I'm looking forward to this year coming up. And our goals in general are to get more people on the streets, that's one of our big ones. We feel like the more people on the street, the healthier it is for our community and for downtown, so we'll keep doing all of our events. We just did our first restaurant week last week, Chow Downtown. We're planning a spring downtown cleanup. I don't think it'll be on Earth Day because I hear there's a big march, and I didn't want to conflict with that, but we do want to do a cleanup. We also want to do a placemaking event that'll be on the block of Cornwall that needs the most love, which will involve a lot of different organizations and just an all-day coloring event and placemaking event. And we'll keep collaborating with the city and Western to do the Paint Bellingham Blue event again. And we also just, we're really busy, we're really doing a lot, and a lot of people come to us, and they're like, "Here's another event you can do." So we are really proactively letting people know that they can do events, and the resources that are available for them to do that, and things on our end that we can provide them, and also resources on the city's website. We also just want to get more people involved. So our quarterly downtown association meetings will be part meeting and part celebration. So the next one coming up is on March 22nd at Goat Mountain Pizza. Tara will come and speak about the shelter. And then the second half of the meeting, we're going to welcome all the new businesses that are in the Arts District and give a shout out to some old favorites like Bayou on Bay, and say goodbye to Pete Gunn, Peter Gunn, if you want to come and wish him well. That'd be good. We'll continue our safety and security meetings. We have one of those coming up tomorrow at 9:30, where the shelter will also be a topic again, expanding our volunteer program, getting more people just helping us out, getting more people involved in our events, whether through vending or just participating, encouraging more placemaking and helping people do placemaking. And we'll also continue our storefront improvement grant program, and I would like to expand that. The winner last year was Mod Sock, and they're going to do this really amazing sign that's like, it's actually, it's a person wearing socks, and she's the size that I am, and it's going to be on the street, and it's going to look really cool. So look for that this summer, they'll be putting it up. We also want to increase the positive perception of downtown's health and safety, and that is a big deal. So through our safety and security meetings and our website, we just want to know, want people to understand clearly the lay of the land of what's going on, the challenges, and also what good work people are doing, because I think a lot of times, people don't really understand what is happening. We also want to guide those meetings into a strategy and to help people advocate for what they feel is important. So instead of just talking, like, "Let's do some action, let's make something happen." And just collaborating with other organizations that are working in the field. We want to strengthen downtown's economy, so like Tara said, we want to work with the city to implement the retail strategy, which will be a stretch for us, but I think it's really important. And we want to help, there's another project, which is the Cultural Tourism, Cultural Heritage Tourism Strategy, which is also economically development-centered. Continue to partner with Team Watcom to find ways to promote Bellingham and Watcom County to new businesses, and just keep partnering with Sustainable Connections and hope to partner with the Chamber this year, too. We also want to advocate for appropriate infrastructure, amenities, and incentives in the district, so investigate the perceptions around parking and give voice to the positive impact that the current initiatives are having. And we also just want to advocate on behalf of the merchants to ensure that their voices are heard, because I think sometimes they feel that they're not, so we want to do that. And then just actively promote the positive changes that are happening, so, you know, the new residential opportunities that are popping up, the new businesses that are opening, awards people are getting, expansions and things like that. Continue to beautify downtown, so we're going to infuse a lot of color here in the next month or two. We will be, in the past, I think the city has paid for the baskets, and then we've split them, I think, and this year, we'll be footing the bill for all the baskets, and we will be increasing how many we have, thanks to Main Street money that we found. Keep the downtown clean, encourage best practices on the street level, so we'll create a brochure for businesses and property owners with relevant information about how to improve their exteriors, their window displays, and rules about permitting, regulations, just everything they would want to know to make their place look better and to be safer. So, and then collaborate with the city on just things around town, streetscape, there's tree wells to be fixed, there's trash cans to be repainted, street furniture. We also are really excited about improving the Parkade Parking Garage Plaza. There's a lot of broken bricks over there, and we'd really like to make it look better and function really well for our night market. We really want to get the word out about Bellingham in a bigger way. One of this is just the avenues that we'll use, but also the way that we'll do it. And in the past, it's all, if you went to our website, it's very Downtown Bellingham Partnership-centered, and we really want the message to be Downtown Bellingham, so we're going to be doing a little bit of a rebranding on that end, and just really focusing on Downtown Bellingham as a message. We want to diversify our revenue sources, so we'll pursue appropriate grant opportunities. We'll continue to lobby on behalf of the Main Street Tax Incentive Program, take care of our donors, get new donors, and we'll also begin the research phase of creating a business improvement district for downtown, which is another thing that I'm really, think is the time is right to do that, not only because I hope that it will eventually help fund the retail strategy, but also because soon, we will become a larger downtown, which will be encompassed by the downtown now and the waterfront, and I think it's just the way that we need to go. So I'm really excited about that. And then just continue to improve our internal systems, policy, and procedures, continue to advocate on behalf of downtown with the city, the Chamber, the waterfront, anything that we can do to assist everybody in making things happen. So I really see our big picture being involvement with economic development strategies, increased community engagement, board, staff, and organizational growth, embracing our leadership role and continuing to improve our credibility as an organization, creating excitement through events and promotions, and increased advocacy and action on critical issues. So I'm excited, and thank you for the time.
Okay, Alice, thank you very much. Yeah, I served on the Downtown Partnership Board for several years through several directors, and I think each one has helped the organization to grow in a different way. I'm really happy to see the way it's growing under your leadership. I'm also really happy that the Main Street program is now established and more successful this year than ever. It was one of the things that I fought for for a couple of years. Took a while to become non-profler in the Main Street program, and now it's moving and getting bigger every year. Really appreciate that aspect as well. Council members, Pinky.
Quick question and comment. How many staff do you have, Alice, at the Downtown Partnership?
Right now, we have seven, but we'll all have six, because Pete's going to be stepping down.
That's not very many staff, considering how much work you guys do in the community.
No, it's a little bit crazy, actually.
So that's very commendable, and I just wanted to give you a shout out and recognition for a couple of things that I think are really extraordinary, and thank you for your leadership. The Be Kind program is really wonderful, and I know the library has adopted it in many businesses downtown, and I want to thank you for your leadership on that. The amount of funds that you got for the Main Street program is phenomenal, and it's all because of the way you worked with your team to make that happen, so huge accolades. That's a big thing for our city. The night markets are extraordinary, and also the Paint Bellingham Blue. You're right, I can't believe we never did that before, and to see that many people there was really awesome, and to find more connections with the university, not feeling like it's on the hill, but part of downtown, is a great step forward for us. So thank you for your leadership and for your team. I think they do a great job.
Great, thank you, Pinky.
Terri.
Yeah, just wanted to say how much I do appreciate the work that's done by the Downtown Partnership, and how much we're going to meet Pete, miss Pete on the streets, you know?
Something tells me he'll still be out there someplace.
I'm going to miss his bad jokes.
Yeah, well, he's looking for a part-time job. If anybody knows of anything where he can just sit around and talk with people and tell jokes, like the old newsstand.
Yeah.
April.
I'll echo all the accolades. Thank you so much. It's been great to watch you in action, kind of from the sidelines. I really want to commend, is it Marissa with the safety? She, I've kind of followed that program, and I try to go several times a year, and she's really taken that from like, what do we not want to what do we want? And it's really profound, and it's changed the way that I feel like the business owners are actually talking and interacting with some people that before it was quite contentious, it still is contentious, but understanding that these are people, too, and how can we work together? That's a hard thing to navigate, and she does it beautifully.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So great employee and great effort on that. A couple of questions. One, I didn't even know about the Paint Bellingham Blue, except for I think Terri and I were at a peace and justice thing up at the Majestic, and I walked out, and I had a nine and a 10-year-old with me, and they were going crazy because everything was lit up on top of, I was like, how are they even able to do that? And it made me think, and this is good that this came up again, because I wanted to connect you all with the college-bound, because it was really great for young kids to see how the college students were being treated, and I think it would be really unique to try to partner that, not put more effort on you, but other people to bring, you know, some college-bound students down to really see what it's like. I mean, students do have a pretty cool lifestyle, and it's something that if you can afford it and have the opportunity to become a college student, it's so much more than just an education, right? So I'll follow up on that. You had mentioned several times it's our cultural center, and this might be more for Darby and Tara, but I'm interested if we've really explored and to find what we feel like Bellingham's culture is and what that word "culture" means to us. And then I think that would be very interesting to look at, but we say it a lot, and I don't know what it means, honestly. So I think it would be very interesting to know exactly, maybe you already know what that means. And then with the, what were we talking about, the retail strategy, it would be interesting to include in that the minority-owned businesses and seeing how we might be able to partner and get more minority-owned businesses downtown. So thank you so much for everything you're doing, and for, I can only imagine how many ideas people get and bring to mind. ideas people get and bring to you. So, to balance that and not make, turn people away, but try to encourage them to take their own ownership of opportunities is a great leadership as well. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys. Okay, council members, anything else? Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, thank you, Alice. And Brian?
No, I just wanted to acknowledge the collaborative nature of the partnership and I know they've worked very closely with PD in the preceding year or so and we're very appreciative of that partnership. That's all, thank you.
Okay, so we're way behind in schedule. Next thing is approval of minutes from February 27th.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Were there any corrections or discussions for the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Now, we're on to Old and New Business. I'd like to mention two things. One, we have indeed confirmed the City Council will have its annual retreat this coming Saturday, March 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Woodstock Farm. If the public has any questions on it, please call our Legislative Assistant to the Council Office.
Two weeks.
In two weeks, coming up soon, soon enough. I'd also like to give a little plug, the Bellingham City Council has their own Facebook page. If you go and look for Bellingham City Council on Facebook, we're trying to use that as a usual source of information, hopefully more interesting than just press releases. And we're going to be talking about that and other items with regard to better public communication at the retreat. Other council members, April?
The Bellingham International Airport Advisory Committee, recently, the updated master plan was brought back. I think maybe people remember that we've already been through that process, but it's something with the FAA and way too much technical information for me, but didn't deem their numbers to be appropriate. So, now there's new numbers and they're quite a bit down. So, I think, don't quote me on this, but in 2050, the original projections were we'd be almost at a million in plane minutes and now we're looking at more like 600,000. So, if you want to see that, you can go to the port's website or connect with the port by phone and they can link you into exactly where you can watch that.
Pinky?
Yeah, something a little sidebar. I just wanted to acknowledge that tomorrow is Marie's birthday, our Legislative Assistant, and from all the council, maybe we could just wish her happy birthday?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Marie. Thank you for everything you do for us.
Anything else under Old and New? Yes, go ahead, Roxanne.
I encourage people to check out the Watcom Transportation Authority website because there are some service changes that are coming about. One is quite exciting that there will now be airport service and you can take a bus to a nearby location and there's a phone number you can call to get an airport carrier to pick you up and get you there. So, it's just another transportation alternative. Also, some changes that might affect neighborhood folks, so please look into that.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go on to our executive session. There were three items scheduled, there's a fourth one that's been added. The first one is labor negotiations, the next one is potential litigation, the third one is potential litigation Haskell Corporation versus the City of Bellingham, and then the fourth item is potential litigation. Total is estimated to be 40 minutes, so I will come back after our recess at approximately 4:40. Thank you.